So this is the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, August 25th. This meeting is being recorded and is being held remote pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's July 16, 2022 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the planning board will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by following the instructions on the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. And in addition, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents should have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote at the time before a board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as a proponents of an item is permitted to have. And the way we're typically responding to that is Chris and I are keeping an eye on the attendees. And all you need to do is raise your hand and we can acknowledge you. All right. So first item on our agenda are formates. I didn't see that we received any Chris, any last minute ones? Okay, no formates.
Randy, did you do roll call attendance?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kim. So we'll do roll call attendance. Pedro?
I'm here.
Malcolm?
Here.
Jonathan?
Here.
Jeremy?
Here.
Randy here. Thanks, Kim. All right, moving on to minutes of August 11, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan, and seconded by Malcolm. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. Pedro, can you vote?
Aye.
Malcolm, your vote?
Aye.
Jonathan, your vote?
Aye.
Jeremy, your vote?
Aye.
Randy votes aye also. All right, then the next item on our agenda is a site plan review for 30 Elm Court, which is the application for site plan approval to change the use of the existing building at 30 Elm Court, Great Barrington, from commercial to two-unit residential per section 8.1 and 10.5 of the zoning bylaw. Looks like we do have a representative of the applicant here tonight.
Yes. Before we proceed, I have to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay, thank you, Pedro. So Pedro is recusing himself. All right.
Panelists, so they can join us on video.
Great, thank you. Mr. Rabin? You just need to unmute yourself.
Hey folks.
Hi, how are you?
Pretty good. How are you?
Doing well.
Let me just get my camera set up here. See, yes.
There we go.
Great, we can see you. Thank you.
All right, cool. This is Ryan.
Hi, Ryan.
Hi.
All right, tell us what you're proposing.
So the building is at 30 Elm Court and I'm sure you guys are all pretty familiar with the area. And it was previously being used as a yoga studio and a Pilates studio. And we're applying to change it to a two-family dwelling.
And we received the plans. Is it two family? Is it top and bottom two family? Or are you putting a party? So there'll be one unit upstairs and one unit downstairs?
Yeah, the building is pretty perfectly structurally situated to make an easy split.
In fact, it already is a split, like the yoga studio operated upstairs and the Pilates studio operated downstairs.
Okay, all right. And is there anything else you want to tell us about the parcel? Any other changes you're planning on making?
I mean, I'm a landscaper, so personally, I'm excited. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that area that we included some photos. So you can see, I'm sure you guys have all driven by there before, but the front of that building is not very super attractive. It's just pavement and building and building. So as a landscaper, I'm excited to get in there and like just breathe a little life into it, bring a little greenery. And it's kind of set up in a perfect spot to, I think, bring a little bit more character to the area.
Okay. I had emailed you, Chris, I thought there's a possibility I wrote an email and didn't hit send, but about the ownership of the roadway, like is there a legal right away from Rock Center to Elm Court? Because it doesn't look like it on parcel access, even though I know there's like traveling that occurs through there. And maybe you guys know the answer to that.
Elm Court is a public street.
Elm Court is where the frontage is, but I'm talking on the west side, the connecting between.
No, that's private property.
That is private property.
And that's owned by, I forget her name at the moment, but she's the woman who owns the granary building, the one that the massage therapists operate out of.
John Ackerman.
Thank you. Yes, so it's her road, I suppose. But I do think that during, I think, power wise, the town does maintain that little strip during the winter months.
Maintain the strip between Ross and Elm Court.
Okay, then, I guess.
Yeah, I was sort of confused about what was happening.
Side to the other.
Chris, are you able to share on screen the site plan that was provided?
Sure.
And, and Ryan and Cardon, you all had taken a look at 8.1. And you know, this is in the Village Center overlay district, right?
Yeah, correct. It is in the BCOD. It's not, it's out of the water district, which is convenient. And, you know. Yeah, I was going to just make a little note about drainage. Like you could see in the photos as well that there is a storm drain located in the southeastern corner of the parking lot and it also, it's all sloped there. So there's really no, I mean, it's pretty, pretty much as straightforward as you can get in terms of drainage and everything.
So you're maintaining that, right? And you're maintaining the stone wall we see in the foreground of this photo?
Correct, yeah.
And, and it looked like from your plan, you're also potentially adding some additional green space?
Yeah, we're gonna, because there's no place to sit or outside or anything. So we want to add a little bit of green space. And then maybe a six-foot-high lattice fence with some climbing climbers on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so there you can see how we've sort of extended some greenery for a couple of feet off of the existing stone wall. And then we're going to put some more greenery against the building as well.
Right, and not that it matter, you know, so we'll have there's evergreens everybody up against the building.
Yeah.
Those, the parking spaces, there's, I think according to the bylaw, we're only required a three, but we're going to leave four. They're all oversized. They're all like nine by 24. So they're, you know. So more and more than sufficient parking.
Okay. One of the questions I had was with regard to like waste receptacles. You know, were you proposing have a place to put those?
So we, we, we were potentially considering where you see the wall meet the greenery. So basically, we're thinking of keeping the waste receptacles near the building in the green space most of the time. And then probably moving them within, within an area towards that outer wall. Sorry, where we have the new green space where they'd be tucked away nicely. That was kind of our operating concept at the moment.
Okay. And then are you proposing year-round rentals here?
Yes, that's an idea at the moment.
Okay, so not short-term rentals? I mean, this kind of housing would be very desirable as a short term, I'm sure. But I don't know if you followed what's been going on in our short-term rentals.
Yeah, we're aware of the new bylaws that are passed. So, you know, we know that there's restrictions on what you can and can't do.
Okay, all right, good. Malcolm, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I think this is a great change. So, looks good.
Okay, Jonathan, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, if I could ask a couple of questions. First of all, how large are the units?
Um, in terms of square footage, I think they're, I think the second floor is around 1,200. The first floor is probably around 1,000, maybe a little less because of some of the structural issues. And we're still playing with it, but right now it looks like it's going to be a two-bedroom, second floor, one-bedroom first floor.
Okay.
This, the plan on screen now that was part of your package shows the existing layout. Is there anything that you could tell the board in terms of how these internal? Is that helpful, Jonathan, if you don't understand how, what the proposed layout is?
Yeah, I mean, it's not really part of site plan review, but I was
Yeah. Yeah, so, so 1,200 square feet, second floor, around 1,000 first floor. The reason why the 1,000 on the first floor is that there's a mechanical room over here and some other things that need to be, that just are what I call immune to modification. And when we're kind of jiggering here, yeah, a first, a first, a one-bedroom or like a big, yeah, one-bedroom on the first floor, second bedroom on the second floor. Probably one bath, maybe one and a half bath type of thing.
Okay. Next question, actually for Ryan. Hi, Ryan.
Hey, how are you?
I saw in your list of plantings that you're going to plant honeysuckle. Could you speak to that? Because there are a lot of honeysuckles that are invasive.
Yeah.
I deal with all the time on my property.
Yeah, the clematis and some of the, the main reason why I wanted to put, said, add some honeysuckle. And again, the number of vines that I listed for the amount of space that we have there is a lot, so it'll all be restricted. But in particular, the trumpet vine and the honeysuckle are, are very much known to be good feeders and natural source feeders for hummingbirds. And then I didn't put it on there, but I probably should have added. I also, I would like to put some Asclepius in the upper area that says set gardens. I want to add some there because they're, they're, they're one of the best feeders around for our butterflies as well. But whatever I do in terms of, you know, whatever would not be native would be very, very, very small kept area. And again, it's mostly for feeding the, the local bird life, which I'm very much a proponent of. And so, that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, it helps.
Sure.
Anything else, Jonathan?
Oh, no, those are my two principal questions.
Okay, Jeremy, did you have any questions for the applicant?
I did not.
All right, I, I have two more. One, so if we understand your site plan correctly, you guys are going to be removing the two entrances, the, the second floor landing and stairs that are on the east side of the building and the entrance that's at the north, the upper left corner of the page and putting in new stairs. Is that, is that how we should be reading the site plan?
Yeah, I think so. So if we, just, sorry, my northeast, south, correct. If the east, the eastern stair that you see there is, well, it's on someone else's property. And we thought it would be a lot cleaner to remove that, help, you know, conformity a bit. And where you see right there, near the parking spaces, is we want to put a new entry with an interior stairwell. Yeah, perfect, perfect placement. And like right inside there would be a vestibule, most likely, with a stairwell going up and a door going into the first floor residence. So that's, that's the plan there. And we also thought that that would be kind of safer and more pleasant than having people have to walk all the way around the stone wall
Yeah, I agree.
To that road. And then there is an, does it show that there? Yeah, and then we want to add this door so we can have access to the, on the, on the more westerly, the southwest side. We want to add that to give us access to the mechanical rooms so that we can take care of certain things for the tenants without having to invade their space.
Okay, all right. Well, then, since you have the depth between Elm Court and the face of the building, and if you're going to have a common entrance on that right side of the page, would you consider providing a walking space that can be accessed from when you pull your car in, parallel to the building front?
So, so if I could address that, if you look, because I had gone through some different design options in terms of that. So, so what I did was actually specifically made for that. So originally I had a path going from where the entrance to the great, the new green spaces, going, you know, parallel with the building over there. And essentially, de facto, that space is still there. It's just extension of the pavement. So if you look at the spaces, again, are 10 feet wide, the parking spaces, but they're like 24 feet in depth.
Yeah.
You really only need 18 feet or so for, for parking. So we wanted to do, to put some kind of dividers four feet away from the, the green space on the south side of the building where our providers are.
Yeah, so where the, that hand movement's happening right now.
Right.
Imagine that maybe, we're just coming up with some ideas.
About four feet of, of just
Like, can you change the surface material or?
We, yeah, oh, that's not a bad idea. But we, I just want to make clear that right there, we plan on putting like some, like, ah, what do I, what do you, what do you call those things at the?
Some bumpers or, you know.
They're called wheel stops.
Yes.
So you can use like a railroad tie. They come in different
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Where, where you see that last bush, right where it says blacktop parking area, imagine going across there would be some kind of obstacle.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's what I was asking.
And so my intention was, I mean, we could put, if you guys, if it's your, your purview, we could, you know, change the substrate or something. But our, our intention was it would be easier to leave it all the same for, in terms of that drainage, to just have one continue, you know, to have one flowing to the other.
Yeah, that's understandable. It's just if you don't tell people where to stop, they'll pull all the way forward. And then like if I'm getting out my car from slot one and I'm trying to walk in the rain, you know, I might have to walk out and around. And then, you know, my neighbors
Some kind of thing there. And then also, it might be nice to put maybe some kind of planting as well. But definitely, definitely something that delineates that.
But if you, if you look, just if you look at the numbers to, to put those buffers, the, the entry to the green space lines up perfectly with, to leave a four-foot, you know, walkway across and then still have more than enough room for the parking.
Okay, great, thank you. And then lighting. I read in the application that you're going to do some lighting that's downward facing, that has sort of a, a nice architectural feature to it. But then I think I also read floodlight. And we do not approve floodlights. They tend to not have any sort of shielding on them. And so we would need you to come up with a different style of light there. We can make that a condition of the approval. But a light that generally faces out is not something that we would normally approve.
Yeah, and that one is, that is the one of the, on the, on the site plans that is existing. You can see, if you look at the, at the current photos of the building, you can see the one that's up there. So we just, we thought we put one, the floodlight that we picked is intentionally dimmable. So it's, you can put it at a lower light setting, at a softer light setting.
Yeah.
Luminosity. So, but if you guys, I mean, we're fine with whatever conditions you guys want to put for there.
We're, we're definitely not attached to the flood. It's just that combination of safety and not being too bright.
Can anyone remember if there's a street light on Elm Court at that location?
There's a street light on the west side, on the private, right about where Elm Court meets the private right away.
Okay, yeah, that's, I thought there was a street light there. It's not
So There's a street light on the sort of
Yeah.
So if you guys honestly, if you're comfortable, we're fine just eliminating the light period there.
You're going to have to, I mean, code requires you have lights over your egressway. So you're going to have that anyway.
But, but if we get rid of that egress, then
You're going to put in a new egress, which will have a new light.
Okay, cool. But whatever condition you want to apply on that, we will, we'll happily conform to whatever lighting you want us to use there.
Look, you still need, you still need two means of egress.
So, so it's, it's our understanding that we, we did some research and we're, I don't, I'm sorry, I think we didn't put this in the thing. But we're, we're putting in a sprinkler system. The building is going to be sprinkler. So because, because it's going to be sprinkler, we're allowed to just have one, one set of egress. And so
Okay.
Okay, that's good to know. I don't think we were aware of that before. So thank you for that, Claire.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
So it's going to be safer and less non-conforming. Yeah.
Yeah, given the density of development down there, that's probably great.
Greener too.
Greener too, which will be nice too. Yeah.
Yeah, we try to check the boxes, so.
Yeah, great. Um, board, any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, can we go back to the planning, plantings again? So, and so can we go back to the invasive part about it? Sorry, let me get back to the right spot.
Question about the invasive species, Jeremy?
Yeah, I mean, the, the plantings that they're using, whenever it threw it the first time, give me a sec. There it is.
On the screen.
Yeah, sorry, I'm looking between my phone and my pad. So, um, so the honeysuckle? And so And so what, did they specify what variety of honeysuckle it was?
We did not. And again, if, if you guys, again, we've got more than enough climbers on that list. So if it makes you guys happy, it's put it as a contingency to just get rid of the honeysuckle. I'm fine with that too, you know. So, if it just would make it easier.
Yeah, I mean, so is Chris, is that one of the things on our, on the, on our lists?
What, what list?
So are, are our lists just tree lists or are, do we have?
Just trees.
It's just trees for plantings?
We, we normally recommend, you know, natives and pollinator friendly, but we don't have a, a standing list.
Yeah, I'm wondering if they would be willing to do something along those lines. Especially the native part. I mean, pollinator friendly. I mean, we can use all of that that we can get.
Section 6.3.3 Performance Standards, Lance, I'm sorry, Landscape Requirements. Planted areas shown contain appropriate mix appropriate to the sighting soils, et cetera. Invasive species shall be prohibited. That's what we said.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so I guess, can it be a request for native?
Sure, yeah. And, and, and just in terms of invasives, invasives, like I, I'm very diligent to the properties I maintain about, you know, the, the worst invasives around, like the Japanese knotweed or the mustard seed, things like that. I am, I am super con, you know, conscious and diligent about, about keeping those things kept. And I live in West Stockbridge by the river as well. So, you know, we've got a lot of pretty bad invasives down there vines and everything. So, so, yeah, I'll, I'll do, you know, my best to keep everything native and keep on invasives and, you know.
Pull all that, uh, milkweed that's growing there in that one farm. And I know that stuff gets aggressive, but all right, great, thank you.
Yeah, and some, you guys come back and walk by next summer. It'll look beautiful, I promise.
All right, board members, anything else? Okay, so we'll, we'll run through, sorry guys, I'm like my computer here with just a single screen today, so I'm a little All right, so we'll run through 10.5 for site plan. Okay, so this is one of those interesting ones where it's just a conversion of existing building and, and very little site changes, but we'll, we'll run through this anyway because it's subject to 10.5. Minimize volumes of cut and fill and number of removed trees, six-inch caliper or larger. The length of removed stone walls, areas of wetland vegetation, the extent of stormwater flow increase from the site, soil erosion and threats to air and water pollution. So I think you guys are not subject to that requirement. You're actually going to increase the pervious space, which we think is great. Maximize accessibility and pedestrian and vehicular safety, both on the site and accessing and exiting the site. So it's an existing parking area you'll continue to reuse. You're going to provide four spaces there. And you're open to using some sort of either grade change or wheel stop to
I think the wheel stop is going to be short. And by, I think by putting the entry again in front of those parking areas, we're increasing safety. So people aren't walking around through roadways to get to the entrance.
Okay, all right. So Kim, could you just note, we want to make that a condition? And we'll, as we go through these, if there's any others, we'll add those. And then number three is minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. I don't think that one applies. Minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage or other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or premises, residentially used or zone. So were you going to provide any kind of dumpster enclosure or?
I think, I think what you'll find is, I don't think the, the site will need more than your two average trash and recycling cans. And those will live behind the green screen in the common area.
Okay.
After space and then come out on garbage days.
So you're providing for screening there. Okay, great. And then minimize visual intrusion by controlling visibility of park, oh, I'm sorry. Minimize glare from headlights, minimize light glare into the night sky and minimize overspill into adjacent properties. If you guys are fine going without the floodlights with the street light and then your egressway lights that are dark sky compliant, I think you should be in, in good shape there. Board members, any other comments? Go ahead.
I just, when I had one, one thing regarding the wheel stops, that's not the front of the car. So if you're going to have a four-foot walkway, you probably need to place the wheel stop six feet. Because if, if a car pulls in till the wheels hit the wheel stop, then it overhangs.
Yeah, good, that's a good point.
Malcolm, did you have something to add about lighting or any other items?
Yeah, I mean, just that, that should be added to the condition list.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, so no floodlight, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, and the downward facing dark sky, dark sky compliant.
Yeah, those are in their application currently. So if, if they're going to stick with those, I think that, I agree with you. That's a good thing to stick with. Jeremy, did you have a comment?
Is that, is that our normal range for?
Yes, the 3,000K.
Okay.
Yeah, and the international darks.
Okay, because the cut sheets are the other, okay. Seventeen to forty-one.
And then number six, minimize unreasonable departures from the character and material scale buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. So you're reusing the existing building. You're, you're pretty much, you're keeping the exterior clavard siding?
Yes.
Patching it where you're changing your
And we just had the building, we just repainted the building, I think, within the last two years, so.
Okay, so it's in pretty good shape. Minimize contamination of groundwater from onsite waste or disposal or operations on premises involving the use, storage, handling or containment of hazardous substances. That one doesn't apply in this case. And then ensure compliance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw, including parking and landscaping. And you are meeting the parking requirement. And I don't believe there is a separate landscaping requirement for this proposal. And you are providing landscaping and you're okay with having no invasive species as a condition. Okay.
My, my mother is also a gardener. I do more, more hardscaping. My mother is phenomenal with plantings, so.
Put your mom in charge.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be great.
Sounds good. All right, board members, anything else? Okay, so then do we have a motion to approve the site plan for 30 Elm Court with three, three conditions, if I counted them right? One pertaining to providing wheel stops so that a pedestrian way can be provided in front of the parking area. One pertaining to not continuing use of the floodlight and having dark sky compliant lighting as per the application. And, oh, what was the third? Oh, and the third being avoiding planting or installing any invasive species.
So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Second.
Malcolm, that was a second. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, hearing none. Jonathan, your vote is?
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, there's one attendee. There's no hands raised yet. Thanks, thanks, Malcolm. Though I appreciate the reminder. I noticed we only had two people on today. So, so Jonathan, you voted aye. Okay, Malcolm?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Randy, aye. And, and Pedro had recused himself, Kim. Okay, great. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Yeah, we really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good night. Uh, let's see, how do we let Pedro know he can come back? There he is. Pedro rejoins the meeting, Kim.
He was stalking us.
Hi, Pedro.
I had somebody has to make sure you guys stay in line.
All right, let's see, where's my agenda? Okay, moving on then. Item number four, zoning strategies to increase housing opportunities. Let's see, so we've got three items here, discussion of site plan review requirements and review standards throughout the zoning bylaw. Malcolm, did you want to go over that real quickly? You had shared your summary? Did that go to the whole board? Did that just? Did that go to the whole board? Did that just come to?
Yeah.
Well, the shopping list did, but there wasn't really an explanation, though.
No.
It wasn't, it, it was like a grocery list, right?
Yeah.
No, I mean, so the, the list, I, I thought Malcolm's, uh, had agreed to go through the zoning bylaw and see where we have. Site plan review. And then, you know, with housing, obviously, we're particularly interested in. The ones that pertain either to mixed use or residential use, right? Is that? That's my understanding of what we want to focus on. But Malcolm did exactly what he said he would do, and he provided us all those references. So thank you, Malcolm.
Welcome.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
When, when I started this whole discussion, it was really about. Eighty years, two families and site plan.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we've moved it into three families. I don't, I don't remember. Including mixed use into the equation.
Uh, I'm, I'm not suggesting necessarily that we take that up, but. But, you know, if we're talking about where site plan and housing intersect, it would include mixed use, right, Pedro?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not suggesting that either, um. You know, I know, I know this discussion's been going on for a long time. Uh, for me, it was instructive just to. Find out all the places where site plan review were required. And, um, and those places, you know, especially in relation to residential. Um, and it was, um. It was an eye opener for me, even though Paige has been saying this for months and months, if not years, that, uh, the two family and eighty. Uh, residential and the ADU are the only ones that really are, uh. Um, by right, without any, uh, that require, uh. Um, uh, site plan review. And it's. That's, it's a good point.
So I guess, you know, the crux of the conversation then is, do we think? Uh, we can incentivize the creation of small scale housing. I think Pedro is your intent, right? So incremental housing by reducing the. Uh, approval burden, um, for. Some of these lower threshold housing development opportunities, right? The ADUs.
Yes. Well, just in, you know, the, the project that you guys just reviewed. You know, um, I recuse myself from that project because they called me up to consult about site plan. And it was, you know, I don't know, six, eight weeks ago, they had to pay me to do it. Not everybody has that kind of. Funding and in my opinion, there wasn't really a lot. A lot there to see. I mean, if we develop these performance standards of talk about. In this case, you know, invasive species, lighting. And in, in this case, parking wasn't even an issue, so providing more parking, I think the performance standard way is, is a great way to. To forego site plan, yet still have some. Uh, requirements that the town would like for people to meet. And allow people to go through, you know, the process, easily go straight to the building permit.
Can we have a, a small discussion around which zones it might be more applicable to? Because, I mean. I, I'm not totally sold that in the V C O D or in the B districts that we don't still want to have. Some oversight for housing development. I mean, I, I might be convinced otherwise, but it just seems to me where you've got. More sort of complex usage, we may want to have some oversight still, whereas maybe in the residential zones. It's, it's more consistent with the underlying land use and therefore would be. A better candidate for something like performance standards. And what, what's the thought there on that concept?
My thought is that if we're allowing it by right in the use table. Then we should allow it to, to pass with as little review as possible, if any, at all. I think, yeah. V C O D obviously doesn't show up in the use table, but. Other districts that are part of it do.
I mean, if you, if you get into, if you go down that path, Brandy, then you gotta have. You gotta have the B district, you gotta have the MX district, you, you know, you got.
It's a lot.
There's a lot there. I think I agree with Pedro that the use should determine it.
Yeah. Part, part of my interest in this as well, um. Why I'm so much in support of this is that just the whole equity thing and that. You know, our process, um, not just money, but just, you know. If you don't have a certain kind of, yeah, access, if you don't have a certain kind of privilege. Like this whole process might just seem overwhelming and, you know, and just. Yeah, I mean, not even getting to the money part of it.
Um. Brandy, are there? In certain districts, the downtown, the V C O D, are there certain? Um, was there anything in particular that prompted you to ask that question? Like, was there specific criteria in? The downtown that is really, really important to that particular district, that particular context? Um, and can that? Uh, be included in your performance standards? When you write about lighting, you could say, well, hey, in the B district, this is what we want.
Yeah, it may well, yeah, that, that may well be. I, I think, you know, like even the application we just reviewed, the V C O D encourages mixed use. So do we really want to have residential on a first floor in a case where, you know, much of the. Adjacent fabric, it, I mean, that's kind of a funny area that is very mixed, but.
Yeah.
You know, it, it was something I was thinking about looking at that application, um.
But you already have a good mix in that instance, right?
Which is, you know, why I could rationalize it in that location, right? Because there is, there is a kind of a wild mix back there.
Yeah.
Malcolm?
Um, the only zones where single family dwelling is not by right are the I zones, I and I two. And in that regard, it might make sense, if we're not going to change that, it might make sense to continue, uh. Uh, what the use table says for, uh. Uh, for the other residential zones as, uh, the uses as well.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I, I think, uh, a residential use, if, if it's allowed in the I zone. It's, it's a residential use.
I hate the residential uses in the I zone because, you know, if someone wants to bring in an I use. It, the residential folks say, oh, it's, you know, it's, it's very disturbing and it is disturbing, but we have to have places in our community where those kind of uses can happen. And we don't, I don't think we want to encourage residential use in the I zone.
No, this doesn't change anything, except I'm just saying you don't need site planner do. If someone can do single family. A residential use there.
Well, they can't do a single family residential use. It requires a select word special permit.
Yeah, so why, why?
But they can create a two family dwelling by right. But not a single family dwelling.
In which zone?
That's the. In the I zone.
In the I or the I two?
That's a little crazy, I think, but, because that's the only dwelling type that can be done by right.
It's not crazy, it's not crazy because you have to look at. How the town has evolved and do we have more need for industrial sites or residential sites? And given where our industry is going, I think we need more residential sites.
Are you kidding, Jonathan? Manufacturing is coming back to the United States.
I can hardly wait. I can hardly wait.
I don't know, I, I think it's important to have.
And chips, we're going to be manufacturing chips in, in our I zone, I'm sure.
Who knows? Who knows?
But nevertheless, it is crazy, Jonathan, because it's the only residential use that's by right, when all the other, uh, residential uses are either. Prohibited or require special permits. That's.
So maybe you're making a really good point that if we're going to allow. By right and with performance criteria, we may want to revisit the I zone in particular, right?
Yeah.
Well, I, I got something to say here about this, um. I can't, I mean, I'm just, my head is just going through all of the places that I know in this country that were once industrial that are now residential. All across the country. It's, um. I, I don't have a problem with there being a special permit there, but. But limiting, what, res- limiting a residential use anywhere in town, I think is absolutely nuts. For what? If the reasons that John just said, I mean, that's what we need most of. That's what we're seeing, you know, the demand for most of. And it's just, it doesn't make any sense to me. This, I think, another topic. But I mean, if you, in New York City, I mean, practically the entire Brooklyn waterfront is industrial. Practically the entire Manhattan waterfront downtown was industrial. Soho was an industrial neighborhood. Chelsea was an industrial neighborhood.
Which is fine. I don't think that's the topic. That's not the topic at hand, though. The, 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 so the, the industrial areas that we have that meet your same definition, Pedro, are in the, you know, the, uh. The Escot and the Husatonic overlay district and are prepped for residential, right? So what we're talking about now are like over in. Off Van Duzenville Road where there's the industrial and when industrial uses have been proposed there. That are modern industrial uses, which are different than historic industrial uses. We have already experienced some pushback from people that live adjacent to those. So, you know, I don't. I don't want to encourage more conflict.
So the best way to do that is to allow residential development.
Yeah.
Along with Van Duzenville Road. We have to listen to the, to what's happening historically. You know, this is. One thing about zoning that we all have to realize is that it is a historical document, and it really got off to a bad start. Another thing is that it does a really poor job of separating uses. Look, just take a look at the map. I mean, if you guys want to have some fun, just take a look at the map and see how it separates us, because it does it really poorly. And Van Duzenville is a perfect example.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not picking on Great Barrington zoning, I'm picking on kind of zoning in general. So the best way that, to avoid what you're saying, Brandy, is to allow, because that's really where. The community is telling.
Think about that. I don't know that I agree with you. I, I'll have to think about that, but just, I don't want to argue with you. I just want to move on to the topic. Of do we want to develop some performance criteria for? Two family A D U, and it sounds like we do, right? So if we're thinking about how we move this forward. Do you already have some, Pedro?
Well, I gave you guys some last, last meeting that I already started as part, it was on the. The, the draft amendments that we looked at, I just added a six point four point seven to it. It says site design, and I put six criteria. I think six criteria on there, or eight criteria, just as a starter. Uh, everybody got it last week.
Can you put that on the screen, Chris?
Yes. Pedro, just. Why don't you look and make sure I'm using the right? Document, you just said?
Yep, it should have been at the end of it.
Seven pages.
It's, it's the, you know, what you sent out, I just added to.
Oh, I see. Yep, that's fair.
There it is. Six, four, seven.
So, uh. Six point four point seven, there it is.
So, I mean, I guess I'll start the conversations as they're silent here, but it, what it, what it says. Oh, okay. You know, what it says at the top is that if you deviate from any of these. Uh, you know, criteria, then you have to come before planning work. And I guess there should be some. Uh, specification on what types of uses this would. This would be applicable.
The, I think your, your criteria here are fine. I, I would be more inclined to be more quantitative than qualitative. Uh, your first one's a good example of being a little bit more quantitative, but, um. I actually apologize, Pedro. I did not look at this previously, so I'm looking at it for the first time, but I'd be happy to. Take a stab at making it more quantitative.
Yeah, so last week I sent you guys the, the Word version as well, so.
I'll, I'll go back to my other emails and take a look at them.
Also, you, you.
Thank you.
You left out, uh, ADA accessibility.
Can you still see my screen up there?
Well, it, that number, number three, you know, addresses it to a degree.
Not, not really, though. Could be more specific is all I'm saying.
Well, we can, we can work with this, though. I think we can make this.
I mean, I just put this together. I think it would benefit from, from the five, from our five minds. Go through it.
No, I think it's good.
And Chris too, sorry.
Oh, I thought that was all four or five was me, no?
And you left out Kim.
Kim can bring us a historical perspective because she probably has some thoughts on it. Okay, so you just took the site criteria that we have and you sort of like flipped them around, right, Pedro?
Some of them, yeah. Some of them I took from some other place. Chris Synthes said an example of one that I thought was interesting. So forth.
And.
Okay.
The intent was to get us started.
And are you anticipating? That this is going to be done by the building inspector? Or by Chris or by someone new that's going to be hired?
Whoever reviews the application, which in most cases is the building inspector.
So that comment about staff, that's, that's intended to be. Um, at the time when the building of permit is applied for.
Yes.
Okay. So, Chris, from your perspective, like practically, do we need to like? Create a checklist that would go with the application? Like, what's the mechanism you see? If, if we add this, we add this to the zoning and then a checklist gets created or? Like, how, how do we make this implementable?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's a checklist or what, but it's the same. But, you know, Malcolm and Pedro have been talking about this, you know, you write clear criteria, yeah. If it's not obviously in conformance with the criteria, when the building inspector is looking at, at the application, if it's not. Obviously in conformance, then. It gets kicked out.
Mm-hmm.
Site plan review.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully it won't go to, uh, building inspector, uh, before somebody talks to somebody at town hall and say, do we need the site plan review for this?
Yeah, yeah, I mean. You know, applicants could be encouraged by some statement in the bylaw that to speak with. You know, development review staff first. We dealt with, we dealt with something like this on, on the DAC when we, um. Remember when we. Were making a recommendation that people should come before DAC if they have to go for a special permit. And we had, um, Ed May was their officio during the, our meetings on design advisory. And he did something, I think, where he just added language directly to the building permit application. So maybe there could be some reference that says. Um, you know, check six point four point seven of the zoning bylaw to make sure you comply with site performance standards or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the applications get amended to include that as an optional sheet that, you know, goes with the building permit application.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, so, um, okay, so we need to sort of like wordsmith this and, and work on that. And are we thinking we want this to apply to, to? ADUs, uh, what, ADUs, two families and three families? Is that where we're at, guys?
The three family discussion is interesting. I don't think we've had that discussion.
What we covered in the last meeting, um, based on the revisions I sent was. Uh, we struck site plan review from two family.
Yeah.
And ADUs did. We pulled three.
I thought we pulled three family into two.
That's right.
Yeah.
In the, in the use table.
That's right, that's right. So two, so it would be single fam- unit.
Yeah.
Single unit residential, two unit residential, three unit residential.
And we're not same family anymore.
Chris, I think you scroll up to the use table.
And accessory.
The use table there, it'll be there.
Yeah, would be all, uh.
There it is.
Okay.
Uh, would, would not have site plan, uh, review requirement. But, you know, they still have to meet those performance standards that we're talking about. If they don't meet them, then they have site plan.
Okay.
The, the other uses, and Malcolm's list was really helpful, um. You know, showing all the instances in the bylaw where site plan review. Is required, um. where site plan review is required, um, you know, those would all still be, still be required unless you decide otherwise for some reason.
And that list Malcolm will be really helpful when we're communicating this out to the public, I think, just to provide some assurances that there'll still be some protections in place.
So, so this doesn't change that you can only do a two-unit plus an ADU by right, right? Unless the zone says otherwise. So it's not going to allow you to do a, a three-unit where the third or where all three units are above the, the ADU threshold. I mean, square footage threshold.
Wait, say that again?
So I, I'm saying you couldn't, this isn't going to allow you to do a, a three, um, unit on a site. Sorry, full-size units, yeah, so, yeah.
I think it would.
I think it would, yeah, no.
So that's, so that's what I'm.
Done too much, Jeremy?
Well, I'm wondering, because the intent was really, I mean, I think, you know, where we're at in town now is we want three-unit to be inclusive of this because the third unit being the ADU. But, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, I mean, I see what you're saying. And so then you wouldn't be able to add an ADU to a site without a special permit.
Units.
If you already have three units on the site.
Because it would be a four unit at that point.
Because then it would be a four unit.
A multifamily, yeah.
And so that would require a special permit?
I'd have to think about it, but I think yes.
Okay, well, then I think, I think then, I think that's okay then. I mean, I, you know.
The way, the way it's proposed now, you could have three units and an ADU.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm not, I, I, I wonder, I wonder if we should discuss that more then.
Yeah, I mean, we're not deciding anything tonight, but yeah.
I thought the idea of changing the use table was more so you could capture those. So if somebody wanted to develop a site from the get-go as two, two units plus an ADU, like a, like a, um, an empty site, um, instead of incrementally adding them that, you know, they can do it easily, but I don't, I don't know if, you know, if we want to, you know, so I guess, I, I don't know. I, I have to think about that more.
Yeah, and you know, a good example, um, to think about it in terms of, uh, Jeremy is, remember a few months ago, we reviewed an ADU, um, for, um, crap, I'm forgetting his name. David, um, oh, he's, uh, he's like the, uh, project manager for, um, I'm blanking on everyone's name tonight. The properties at West and South, it's on that corner. It was a big Victorian and there's a garage. What's David's last name?
Oh, carpenter.
Carpenter, thank you.
Converting it the other way.
Was it?
Right, but that house is, it hasn't been converted yet. So that was a three or four family. It's an old Victorian, right? It had three or four units in it. And then he got an approval to add the ADU. So I think that's.
Two-family plus me.
Right, right. So that's like a good, kind of like, what could that look like in our community? That's not the only way it could look for us.
I mean, I mean, personally, I mean, I mean, I'm just thinking like voter side of it. Um, I mean, personally, of course, I'm, you know, I'm a, interested in increasing housing in Great Barrington, so that, you know. But, um, I mean, I want, I want to see, I want to see these things. I want to see these things pass without, you know, like there not being any hangups here. And, um, that, that part I wonder about.
Okay, well, we can, we can think about it. We don't have to decide.
Yeah, you would add, if you went down that route, you would add some sort of.
Like a trigger, right?
In, in section eight point two, you'd say ADUs are allowed by right as indicated in the table of use requirements, except where there's three units already on the site.
On the site, yeah. I mean, if they have the, you know, I mean, if they have the frontage and everything and they can just, you know, divide this or formate the site, then, you know, it's no big deal. And then they should, you know, I mean, I guess they'd have to do the formate, but, um, you know, then I don't think they should, you know, then it'd be great if they didn't have to come before us to, you know, um, besides the formate. But yeah, but I, but I wonder about that. I, I wonder if, yeah, just having the note, like if there's already three units on the site, then, yeah.
Okay, well, let, let's think about the different, like, size properties and the different zones. And, you know, it may be applicable in some zones and not in others. Maybe that's one way to think about it, too.
Why, why is the Board of Health approval, uh, required in advance of a building permit?
Why is Board of Health approval?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, let's see. Pedro, you may know more, but my experience with it is that you need to demonstrate that the site has the capacity for septic, you know, because otherwise you have to get, um, waivers for your septic system.
Yeah, but the way that is, that's for every ADU. And if you're on Town Water and Sewer, why does the Board of Health come in?
I don't think it would in the case of Town Water and Sewer.
But it does because of that language.
Yeah.
We can look at editing that.
I, I think in my, what we discussed last week, I had a comment in the margin about considering deleting that sentence.
Okay.
I, I just.
That's okay.
The Board of Health has a, you know, a CEO can't be issued. Some people can't live in it unless there's, it's on utilities or there's a Board of Health approval. That's just, that's just code, so.
Yeah, so we may not need to have it because of this code.
Yeah, so we check into that.
Okay, good comment, Jonathan. Thank you. All right, so we discussed items A and B under zoning strategies. Are the last one, um, discussion including, discuss including the table of use, alternative residential types, including, for example, dormitories and shared living arrangements. This was the single-room occupancy.
Randy, I just want to close A and B there.
Okay.
Our job as a board for next time is to look at, um, you know, consider the list that Malcolm sent out, that lists where segment is required.
Yeah.
Consider, uh, what to do, you know, do we eliminate it for one, two, three, and ADUs? Um, and, uh, you know, consider the performance standards, you know, and propose, you know, changes or, you know, what you want to do with the suggestions that Pedro has started with.
Yeah, thank you. And, and in terms of those suggestions, everyone, if you can think about it in, in terms of like, just read it plainly yourself, do you feel it's clear enough that we're not going to put the building inspector or town staff in a position of like having to be really, um, like making a lot of value judgments?
So if I don't hear comments from you by, let's say, within a week.
Yeah.
Then what I'll do is just work on it, um, and, and give you something for the next year.
Okay.
But if you want, if you want your thoughts included, please send it within, you know, the next seven days.
Okay.
Go, discuss it again at the next meeting. But if you want me to build something in.
Pedro, did you have one other thing?
Yeah, I just, I didn't want to lose track of the amendments that Chris had proposed at our previous meeting. Um, I think we should continue to review and come to some conclusion on, on those amendments as well.
I, I thought that we decided he had pretty much nailed it and we were in support of those amendments. Uh, that was my recollection, but.
Yeah, so I think we're.
Yeah, so, so we agree unless someone's got some addition. You know, even Eileen had offered some additional little, uh, comment to us.
That might have been in the letter, but.
Oh, that was the letter.
But anyway, um, yeah, I think folks, there, there was no big, uh, issues with those. So I, you know, resolve for now. We'll bring out it again when we're ready to, uh, start putting these out for public hearings. That's, okay, so.
I think we should have more discussion on Jeremy's point, which is one of.
Okay.
The, the three-family.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll discuss that next time then, too.
So three-family versus ADU.
Yeah. Okay, foresee, Randy, alternative residential types, including dormitories and shared living arrangements slash single room occupancy.
Yeah, yeah, um.
So Pedro made a comment last time.
Pedro and Jeremy or Pedro and Jonathan. Jonathan, have you brought this up in the past?
We don't have anything in the use table now that would allow, um, this sort of thing to happen. You know, um, but, you know, right, right now, a multi-family development, uh, if permitted, would have to have, you know, kitchen, bath, et cetera, everything in, in, uh, in a unit. That's how we are defining unit now, based on the proposals we discussed at the last meeting. In a shared living arrangement, in a dormitory, of course, there's not necessarily a bathroom in the unit. There's not necessarily a kitchen in the unit. Uh, but those are still, um, living arrangements that can be really important to our local housing stock, particularly where there's seasonal, seasonality.
What about co-housing?
What about? Could you define it?
Well, we used to call it commune something in the sixties, but.
I don't go back.
None of you was alive then.
I think, can.
There's.
Wait, hold on, Jonathan, is that the end of your thought? Because I think Malcolm had something to say and Pedro and Jeremy all do, so we'll just go around the horn.
Well, I thi, I think co-housing is, is one aspect of what we're talking about.
And, and just as Chris had said, can you define it? It's, it's a common cooking, uh, uh, sanitary space, right? And then, um, private living quarters. Is that generally how you would define it or?
Yeah, well, the, the house next door to me sold. Um, and it was a nuclear family and now it's several nuclear families. It's, it's seven or eight people living together. I don't know how many people live there, but they're all living together. So I think that's essentially co-housing.
Um, yeah, I mean, the co-housing, like, that I've been familiar with is like usually some sort of like large, larger scale. And I think you'd have to define how many units it would be, but it'd be probably something in the multi-family unit range. So say more than four units, where the pattern of development was such that you either had a single building or multiple buildings arranged in proximity to one another, where there was a, like a shared cooking space in particular, and then maybe separate living quarters that formed wings or separate cottages. Um, but the point was each dwelling unit did not have cooking and, and bath facilities. So there, there was some sort of common space there.
Right, and I don't think that's reflective of the environment that we live in now because no one is going to build co-housing with multiple units that way. They're going to take an existing house and they're going to live in it that way. And so.
Do we even have any role in that, though, like regulating that? But, you know, if, if I and my in-laws all decide to move in together, like, what is the town care? And should we even be involved in that? I would say no.
There's, there's, there's definitely some interest in this kind of development, though, in town right now for, um, workforce housing in particular, affordable housing, workforce housing. So I think it, it's useful to discuss it.
Wait, when you say this type, can you be specific? Because I was talking about one thing and Jonathan was talking about another thing.
Well, I mean, this is very similar. I mean, they're going to zone it differently, but this is similar to, um, was it the Windflower down on twenty-three there? Right at the South Agamont border. Um, I mean, it's essentially this model and it's not like, it's not like a giant nuclear family. It's, it's going to be set up as, you know, a bunch of workers, in a sense, sharing. Um, they all have their own bathroom facilities, but they don't have, uh, their own cooking facilities. They're going to share cooking facilities and kind of common spaces and so forth. And, you know, I mean, in addition to that, there's, there's, uh, uh, two houses on the site. But, you know, i- it's, that whole use is sort of, is sort of, I, I think they've figured out a way around it. Um, but if we had some sort of zoning for this, I think construct is looking at this as sort of like a model for possibly other development they want to do, you know, in the area. And so, you know, I mean, I think it's, it's, I think we should look at it to make that path, you know.
So how is it not a boarding house under our current definition?
Um, I mean, I, it, before construct had it, there was a, in one of the meetings, there was, there was like a little discussion around it of how they would do the zoning. Chris, do you want to, I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if.
I do not.
You don't want to tell, yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we should, need to necessarily discuss that now.
Let, we should not be discussing any specifics. We're talking generically.
But I think, but I think the, the concept of that sort of thing, you know, rooms with or without, you know, I mean, I, I guess, you know, so a, a minimum of, of, of room or a minimum of the living space without a, without, um, you know, maybe sanitary facilities and/or cooking facilities.
Pedro, are, are you able to bring any light to what the building code says? Because I imagine there's a definition for this.
The building code is, I can't, I, I can look it up and I can report next, next time. But I, when I was doing the research for Josh, the building code didn't really.
We're not going to discuss a specific item.
Yeah, I mean.
But I wanted to answer your question, Brandy, that the difference between what Windfly would have been and what our boarding house, according to our bylaw, I believe the difference is that our bylaw only allows you to rent three rooms to borders.
Yeah.
Now, um, we have a tourist home.
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to pull that.
Yeah, the only, the only thing, the tourist home requires more than three, less than eleven, but it's
Yeah.
on a nightly basis. And that's the only caveat here that would make the tourist home not applicable for.
And, and then it says, and not another designation like an inn, a country inn, a B and B, a guesthouse or the like.
Yeah, so, I mean, but, I mean, just because we have a definition doesn't mean, I mean, basically it requires a select board special permit to do it. Uh, what I'm curious about in, in this category is, uh, financial questions. Who owns it? And how is the, what's the financial arrangement, um, in, in these things? Uh, if it's somebody who owns it, who's renting it out to others, then, you know, we, we kind of have it covered.
As far as multi-family?
Yeah, or tourist home or lodging, uh, which is also a line item, but it's not defined in our, um, uh, in our definitions.
Did, did I send you all the article that was in the New York Times over the weekend about, uh, housing in the Hudson Valley? Uh, for workforce, mostly, um, tourism and agricultural labor?
Yeah, I read it. It was, it's the one, I don't know if you sent it, but I read it. It's the one that talks about how some business owners are providing housing.
Yeah, yeah. But they're, they're, they're doing this sort of concept where they're making dormitory-style facilities available to workers. So say, you know, like, uh, if, if we had, uh, Cranwell or whatever, you know, there'd be a dormitory on-site that would provide housing for, for workers. So, I mean, is that, is that kind of where we're thinking we want to go? Or do we want to see essentially apartments that are built to a different standard than a multi-family unit would be now?
Well, there, I mean, there is, there is a big issue with finding, um, with finding workforce now because of the lack of housing. Um, and, you know, I mean, I mean, I've seen it personally where, um, and also losing, um, losing workers because of housing, like the, um, not because people, you know, lose their housing. They're working for you, they lose their housing, and then they're not able to work for you anymore. And so, you know, I mean, s, you know, something like this and converting, you know, existing properties, um, you know, I mean, I think it's, you know, or, you know, if somebody wants to build it new. I mean, I think it, it can feel, it can definitely be another piece in the housing puzzle. I mean, I don't imagine, you know, it's going to be like, all of a sudden, these are going to pop up all over town. I mean, I think. I mean, I don't imagine, you know, it's gonna be like, all of a sudden, these are gonna pop up all over town, I mean, I think it's gonna be something like. Construct, you know, or an organization like that, that, you know, I mean, I don't think you're gonna. I mean, we, there has to be some sort of limits on it, you're not gonna get some big developer to do, uh, you know. Like a hundred-room version of this, or whatever.
Uh, you know, Jeremy, I was actually thinking, um, that the, the old nursing home on Maple Ave is like almost ready-made. For single-room occupancy, right? And, and squeeze bathrooms, you know, it, it's a relatively large room.
How many, how many units was that?
I don't know how many rooms it was, hmm, was it eighty? It, I think it was, or maybe it was eighty beds. So maybe forty rooms, I don't, I don't remember, does anybody else remember?
I mean, there could, you know, I mean, we can put, you know, I mean, anyway, I mean. There could be a, yeah, I mean, I think it's worth talking about, um. I mean, there can be a cap, there can be, you know, I mean, it's probably all special permit anyway, or. Um, maybe there is a trigger for that it's just site plan until a certain level, but. I don't know, I, I think it's, I think it's definitely worth talking about.
Pedro has his hand up, and then I have a question for Chris.
I'm gonna leave my hand up because I, before I go into my thoughts, I wanted to go back to Malcolm's thought, because I don't think it was addressed. About the financial structure, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that.
That's what I was gonna ask Chris.
My thoughts on that are, um. It's, it's no different than a multi-family, multi-unit residential property. You know, there's, there's an owner, it's either it's owned by all the residents. As a co-op situation, or it's owned by some entity that rents out the room. It, it's not the financial thing that makes it different, it's, it's what's in the unit. Is it a separate independent living unit or is it not? Right now, we say, we talk about principal uses being. Um, separately, living, they have kitchen and bathroom in the unit. And, um, so there's no provision right now if somebody were, were to take a nursing home or hotel. And convert it to something, you can convert a nursing home to a multi-family, multi-unit development. So each, what, what now is a nursing home room without a kitchen in it. Each one of those would have to have a kitchen, that's some of the unit development. So there's nothing in the code now that would allow you to do that. With a common kitchen.
And wouldn't they have to be a certain size?
I have my hand up.
Yep, yep, hang on, Malcolm, I'm getting, I wanted Chris to be able to finish his thought.
So that's, that is my thought, and I'm passing it to Malcolm.
Okay, thank you.
What's a lodging house? Wouldn't this be Maple Avenue Lodging House?
I think that that speaks to your short, like, if the, the definition we have now, I, I like to start with what definitions do we have now, right?
We don't have a definition for lodging house, all we have is a line item.
I'm sorry, I was thinking the tourist home. But, yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's a time factor, right? We don't want this to turn into. A hotel, a hospitality use, we want it to be for long-term occupancy, right, Malcolm?
That's where, that's where building code and zoning code would intersect, and if it's a lodging house, if it's a tourist home, if it's a hotel. Those people can't stay more than thirty days.
Why, why can't they stay more than thirty days in a lodging house?
Uh, this, it's presumed to be a short-term.
What, where does it say that?
Brandy, the building code defines, uh, transient use, lodging houses are transient uses. Um, that don't have tourist homes in there.
Good question.
The lodging house is clearly a.
Fair question.
Our tourist home can be rented on an annual basis.
Yeah, so there'd be some digging into definitions we would need to do, Pedro, what else did you wanna add?
If I may, that's where I wanted to start, I think, um, this discussion merits review of borders, lodging houses and. The, the transient home for tourist uses, I think those things need to go out and need to get re- redone, and I think. It would be maybe better, instead of trying to define the uses. Just saying out loud what we want to allow, which is all of these type, different types of. Residential habitations, so rather than saying co-housing is allowed, or dormitory. Style is allowed, or whatever, just say, you know, instead of, as Chris keeps saying, that, you know, right now, you need to have a kitchen and a bathroom. In order to have a dwelling, well, dwelling might not be defined as specifically. With a kitchen and a bath, dwelling could be one of these three things. With partials, sanitary uses, with partial kitchens, or with none, or with a shared situation. And then let people decide, you know, what they call their arrangements themselves.
I would love to get some input from folks that are in. The affordable housing space on this concept, because. When we talk a lot on this board about equity, I wanna be careful not to create. Really substandard housing, where we have an unintended consequence of, yes, high affordability, but. You know, low service, and you end up with. You know, a, a family of four or five people trying to cram into a, a, a single-room occupancy sort of scenario. Because it's affordable, you know, but having kids in an arrangement like that is gonna be entirely different than having, you know. Two adults in an arrangement like that, so I, I, I'd like to get some input. From people that operate in this space regularly and just see, you know, what their thoughts are and, and what issues they run across.
Not a bad idea, but I think we should consider that the first hundred and forty or so years. Of the country had exactly these kinds of uses for the most destitute of people, I, up to the people who are trying to, you know. Move up the ladder, it's kind of, I see it as a traditional form of housing for the country that's been eviscerated.
I, I think it's a little terrifying, though, Pedro, because this is the kind of housing that I'm aware of, becomes available for. Like women in domestic violence situations, and it's really not, you know, to, to have to reside in that space. And have your kids with you can, you know, hotels often get used for emergency sheltering, and it's, there's a lot of. Articles and literature out there that say it's, it's really kind of complicated, it maybe works in the short term, but it may not be a long-term solution, so I. I, I just think we should solicit some more input there.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea.
Jeremy, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, if we're gonna solicit, um, I mean, now, like, the. Like, the trend is to try to reach the communities you're trying to reach, right? And so, not only the so-called experts, but you wanna, like, in the whole equity world, you wanna talk to people. You know, and so, maybe construct is a good source for this, like, we wanna speak to people that do lose their homes, we wanna speak to. You know, people that have been through this process before, and like, you know, is there a place for this kind of housing? Would this have been something that would have helped? You know, I mean, I don't think we, you know, like. I don't think we need to think that we're building, like, forever housing for everyone, I mean, hopefully affordable housing is just that, just temporary. You know, and, and then hopefully we structure it in a way that allows people to then use that as a springboard to something else, and. You know, but you want all those pieces along the way, you know, you don't want someone to, like, go from a home to homeless. Until they can figure out how to rent their first apartment, you know, it's like.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, I agree, I just, I, I, I. I think it, it needs, we need to work on this one a little bit more, I don't think we're ready to, you know, do something this year, I think we should do some homework this year. And then think about it for next year.
But I think, if, if I could encourage us to not just look to experts for this, I mean, I think it's extremely valuable, but. If we can also get some input from.
What, what avenue do you recommend? Do you, are you suggesting reaching out?
Yes, through construct, through, um, I mean, even, um. Well, even like Rarod Street Youth, yeah, I mean, I think Habitat, I think Bridge, you know, um. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, I think a lot of non-traditional, like, housing things, but, um, places. That, um, people go just for help, you know.
I think having Jane come on.
I mean.
Tell us what her thoughts are for.
Yeah, I mean, she's a crazy resource, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 that's, I think that's a good idea. All right, so, Chris, I don't, I don't think that this one's, this one's not ripe to move forward for this year's zoning. But I do think we wanna do a little bit of homework on it, so maybe October, we can try and have a guest. Come in, um.
But we should definitely spend time during the cycle, doing it, like, not put it off, even though it's not gonna be ready, yeah.
Chris did such a nice job putting the zoning language together, we don't have to spend, you know, three or four months wordsmithing it, so. Gives us time to do research on other things.
He's getting better, isn't he?
He's well-practiced at this.
Better, faster.
All right, um, so I guess I'd just encourage everyone in kind of closing that item out to reach out to your networks, you know, for. Examples, um, and maybe people we can outreach to over the next couple of months to get some input. Um, if anyone is also familiar with, um, other bylaws, um, related to this type of use. Um, be good to start collecting those also.
They don't exist.
They don't exist?
If they do, I mean, it's.
Don't they exist in New York? I thought New York had it, no?
New York has three different, uh, laws that govern its housing.
Yeah.
And it's, it's kind of performance-based for the most part, so.
Okay, Chris, APA, do they have anything that you're aware of, or?
Probably does, yep.
Okay, well, you can maybe look, take a look there. All right, um, item five, I, you know, I don't know if we're ready to look at this, Chris, um. We had received, uh, a notice from Chris about the state is sort of. Evolving the Green Communities Program into this Climate Leaders Program. Um, and my thought in, in taking a look at that was. You know, are there things that we should be doing, um, on the planning and zoning side, um, it, that could help move. Great Barrington in that direction, we're already, um, a green community under the Massachusetts Department of, what is it? Energy and.
Resource.
Resource, yeah, um, so, oh, it's right there on the agenda, sorry, um. So, but, you know, I, I haven't heard, Chris, are, are we thinking about pursuing the Climate Leaders Program? Is the Sustainability Group taking that up?
I, I don't know.
Okay, all right.
They, they may, I mean, it, it presumably might be something that they. That they look at, um, Sustainability Committee, and bring to the Select Board. In my brief review of this Climate Leaders Program. Is it kind of a prototype that the state hopes to enact, invite communities into? Great Barrington's already doing quite a number of these things, so.
Yeah, there.
Put it on screen if you want.
Isn't there some money involved, Chris?
There's usually grant, usually grants from DOE are for various. Programs, whether it's weatherization, or electric vehicles, or whatever it might be, this DOE is, is pretty, uh.
This is kind of a pilot thing with a limited number of towns, and they all have to be designated green communities to even apply.
Which we are a green community, yeah, so, I, I, this is, like, the Climate Leaders piece, I think, is something that's not necessarily. In our board's purview, I would see the Sustainability Committee picking that up and, and championing it, but I was just thinking in terms of. You know, the land use policy piece, like, are we, are we ahead of the curve? Can we say to the Sustainability Committee, hey, if you're thinking about this, we've already checked boxes two, three, and five, because we've got. You know, streamlined permitting for renewables, for instance, um. So, that, that was really my interest in bringing this up as a discussion item, um. Does anybody wanna see it on screen, or is this just, no, okay.
I mean, we can, we could also look at things, um, you know, also with developments. You know, things that kind of, um, touch this, so. Like, encourage, I mean, I think, I don't know if we really do encourage it, but, um. So, like, community garden spaces, um, like cooling, um. Uh, like, community cooling spaces, um. Uh, what are some of the other ones, um, but, but incorporating some of that kind of stuff. Um, I mean, I, I, I had one thought just about, um, and it's not, I don't know if it's not really on that level, but. So, like, dog owners always get so upset when, like, commercial development, um. Like, they redevelop their properties and, like, get rid of all the trees and put in, like, you know. Trees that aren't gonna provide shade for, you know, you gotta wait ten years or whatever, um. But, think, things like that, um, but in touching, you know, some of the issues. That are gonna, that are arising and that are, you know, gonna get, become bigger problems, um. Working that into some of, I don't know.
Some of the zoning.
Yeah, and then also just workbooky stuff too, maybe, you know, um. I mean, I really like the ideas of, like, like, the whole ADU thing, you know, providing people. Like, ready-made stuff, or, you know, making the process much, um, more understandable or easier to pursue. You know, and then, like, including those kinds of things in that, um. You know, because like, a small, like, a small, um, raised bed, you know, on the property can. Reduce your food cost by so much, I mean, it, it would have to go along with some sort of other programs where. E- e- especially if you're dealing with equity, that there'd have to be, you know. Like, what I guess you would really want is you would get, you want, um. Like, people, um, people within communities to kind of. Like, kind of take this on organically.
Yeah, you'd want it to percolate up, so that people engage, okay.
Yeah, but like, in, in, in terms of, like, creating, like, you know, something where they could help each other, like, so people that. You know, there's plenty of people that don't understand, like, we live in this kind of world where it's like, oh, yeah, like, you know, a carrot is a carrot, you know, and. Versus the world where people think carrots are those frozen little squares that you, I mean, I'm, this was like a joke when I was growing up that. You know, like, some kids would think that carrots are literally the frozen little squares that you, you know, that get put on your plate, or heated up and put on your plate. Um. But, you know, I mean, it, it's, for some people, that's.
Probably a, a separate issue we won't be able to tackle, so, I'll, I'll leave the Climate Leader Program alone, Chris, if it's not. Been thought about, but if, if you hear the Sustainability Committee saying that they are gonna take it up, um, we can circle back on it and offer up what the. What the, um, zoning code already has as far as getting them in the direction of the Climate Leader Program.
Okay, I mean, I, I think there's definitely interest from, like, the Sustainability Committee, from the, uh, from the, uh, the Affordable, uh, Great Barrington Affordable. Housing Trust Fund. Board. And for some help in zoning, and so I think, you know, like, creating those, creating those discussions. Um, either with the full, uh, like, like a joint meeting with a full committee, or, you know, having members of the committee. Or boards, you know, come to us, and, um, so we could have some sort of discussion, and maybe, you know, they have some ideas of. Things that we haven't thought of for zoning.
Yeah, that's possible, definitely. All right, uh, number six, board and subcommittee updates, issues or concerns, Malcolm?
Uh, no, we've got a housing subcommittee meeting on September ninth.
Okay, great, thank you. Jonathan?
Well, I raised last, at the last meeting, the issue of driveways. I sent you language to Chris and Brian, and Brandon, you didn't send it out, so. What do I have to do to get something like that on the agenda?
Uh, it was an oversight on my part, Jonathan, I apologize, I was not meant to slight you in any way. Um, I'll talk with Chris about it, and we'll get it on the next agenda.
You can send it to me, Johnny.
All right, that's fine, um. I'm sorry, I didn't intend to miss that, I apologize. Anything else, Jonathan?
Um, no.
Okay, Pedro?
Yeah, I'll mention something that, um, I was on a call today with a regional, um, housing policy advocacy group. And they had some updated statistics on it that I thought were, were interesting to share. They said they put, they, this sort of presentation, it was kind of like a summary of some things, it's about, and obviously it was, housing was a topic. Um, a couple of things that stood, stood out to me, one was that they put that enough, they took a survey and granted, you know how surveys are, not everybody participates in this survey, but the, the survey, um, reached out to community leaders to ask them how much housing was being put up in their communities. And they put up a list and they had something like fifteen towns on there, and it struck me that we were the only South County town on the list.
Mm-hmm.
And so it just, we were the only South County town, again.
Building affordable housing?
From a survey about, um, how many units are on the boards or, you know, coming on board in the next two years, actually, or just whatever they have on board. And it just made me think that, I don't know if it'd be worth, you know, we're, we're sitting here in our little bubble trying to solve the housing problem here on, on our committee through zoning and these discussions every, every week, I wonder if it might benefit, you know, the, the county, at, at least our region here in South County, to reach out to these other communities that aren't doing anything about it. Just throw that out there. But let me just give you a couple of, um, there was, I, one community that was not listed was Lee, and Lee's got that Eagle Mill project, who's just gonna bring in fifty units, so fifty-six units, they had forty-three units for us coming on board and then, within the next year. But I think the, the idea to kind of start thinking a little more regionally, maybe just, you know, we have the, the ability to reach out, I don't know if it's a good idea or not, guys can let me know what you think. They also had some statistics on there about that, where they focused their findings on forty B, right, so they looked at all these communities and, um, for their forty B requirements and the rest of it. And for, uh, and one thing that they came up with, when they were doing this, is that they realized that if all the communities reached their forty B limits, they still wouldn't be reaching the demand. So they started, so they started thinking about it, and they say, they said that rather than meeting that ten percent of all the housing units in the county, eighteen percent of those units, uh, of all the units in the county would have to um, be affordable in order to meet the demand. Um, so for, I, one statistics they said, they gave, they put down there, one was that, you know, in Great Barrington, we have forty units of subsidized housing, which is, and I thought really interesting, because what does that say? Does that say that there's not, um, I mean, to me, it just says that there's not inventory for homes to even be.
Wait, could you, could you really pick that up, forty?
That seems a lot.
Way more than forty units, what are you talking about?
Well, they said seven point nine percent of the housing inventory is subsidized. That's what they said.
Yeah.
Subsidized housing inventory. That was our, our subsidized housing inventory, seven point nine percent of our units.
So where'd you come with forty units?
Of, of, of the forty, of the forty-nine units, um, of those subsidized housing units, only forty-nine of them are for incomes below, eh, below eighty percent AMI.
That's not right.
Yeah, it's not correct.
It's bad information.
Okay, so that's what I got from them. The other number two that I thought was, that I found interesting, it goes back to that forty B thing. So, they estimated that we needed around twenty more units to meet the ten percent. Right?
I think, I think, um, yeah, I think we're at ten percent. I've been talking to the state about that, but anyway, go, go, go.
To meet the eighteen percent, we'd need two hundred and seventy more units.
Oh.
Makes sense.
Thanks.
Board and committee update.
Thank you, Jer, Jeremy?
Well, and all the surrounding towns don't have public utilities, so that, they're not in danger of forty B projects, which is why they have no affordable housing.
Yeah, it's a good point. Jeremy, anything for you?
Uh, so CPC, we reorganized, uh, Karen Smith is our chair, uh, Tom Blattfield is our vice chair. Um, we set a date for the public hearing, um, for the CPA, or the current cycle CPA plan, uh, Thursday, the fifteenth, that five thirty, is that? Do I have the time right? I know I asked this, was the last thing I asked at the meeting. Um, I, but sorry, my phone is, it's my device, and so I can get it, but, um, but I believe it's, that's the time, the, uh, Thursday, the fifteenth, um, at, um, five thirty, so if we could not schedule another meeting that day, for us, um, and, uh, I think that's it. Oh, I'm sorry, we also set the step, uh, one and two deadlines. Um, they're similar to last year, um, Friday, October, uh, twenty-eighth at, um, four PM for step ones, and then, uh, Friday, December second, four PM again for step two deadlines. Um, we haven't set even tentative, tentatively, um, our review schedules for those yet. I think that'll probably be at that next meeting on the fifteenth.
Great, thank you, balls rolling.
Right, Randy, can I ask a quick question about CPA?
Sure.
Do you know, Jeremy or Chris, if, if, um, if a town board or citizen wanted to apply to CPA for a tree planting program, would that fall under, uh, open space and that?
It. So you mean general, or are specific to a property?
I don't know, there would be a plan, let, let's say it's like, uh, somebody has a looked at the town and they, and they, they have found the need for, or, or a desirability or an opportunity to plant trees in certain areas, and they asked CPA for forty grand to pay for trees and labor to install them.
I don't, Chris, am I, am I right, if it's not like an improvement of, like, uh, particular open space? Um.
No, I, I have to.
Wouldn't be?
A little bit more.
Yeah, um.
But I don't know, I don't have the answer, Pedro, I have to think about that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great, um, and nothing on Lake Mansfield, uh, task force at this time, we've got a meeting next week, so maybe something next, next time. Um, item seven, town planners report, Chris, anything from you?
Um, we, uh, in, in terms of next meeting, talking about driveways.
Yeah.
Good recovery, quick, quick recovery, yeah.
It was already in the queue.
Yeah, exactly, no, um, the, uh, I do expect, I, I hope that we were able to see a preliminary plan for the North Plain Road site uh, at the next meeting, I, I'm not sure if we will, so.
Okay.
Well, that's it. I, I think that's it for now, thanks.
What would they be coming to us for?
Uh, well, it, it depends how far they are. Um, I believe the permitting path will be through a, a planned unit residential development. Which includes a required preliminary subdivision plan review by this board as part of the purr procedures. So, at least that, if not a meeting before that to review some conceptual plans. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see that there are any citizens out there raising their hands, do you, Chris?
Just Eileen, it's a star six, star nine on your phone, Eileen.
All right, uh, hearing, no further comments, we'll, uh, adjourn the meeting at seven forty then.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.